Well, our second public hearing is oddly enough almost a very similar situation with the Emeryville Center of Community Life pedestrian and bicycle path. Maru, take it away.
So we need Commissioner Steinberg.
That's right. Commissioner Steinberg.
I assume he's downstairs.
Can come back. Come back.
Sure.
Thanks, Charlie.
So while we are waiting, I would like to direct your attention to the emails we have received on this item. We have four emails, and all four of them are in support of deleting this path. And all of them are from residents of Emery Bay Village.
And I'll just reiterate what I said on the previous item again. Under state law, a majority of the full membership of the commission must vote in favor to pass this resolution. So that means four of the five of you at a minimum must vote in favor for this resolution to pass.
Okay. So this is a bicycle and pedestrian path that connects 47th and 53rd Street, and it is on the western property line of the Emery Secondary School. And this is the graphic from the general plan, and the same one is reproduced in the pedestrian bicycle plan and is known as P4. In December of last year, the city council directed staff also to initiate this path. And there were two reasons that were identified. One was that there is limited distance between the pool facility, which is in the school, and the Emery Bay Village. And in order to build this path, the deck that is adjacent to the pool would need to be minimized or would need to take property from the Emery Bay Village parcel. The second issue was that the Emery Bay Village residents had expressed concerns at various workshops that were held in conjunction with the ECL project, and they were concerned about potential crime activities, noise intrusions from the path, vandalism, and security issues, pretty much the kind of issues that we heard about in the last item. These two went to BPAC, and the BPAC unanimously recommended that the proposal for the GPA be denied. Again, they felt that the path should be retained in order to benefit the greater good of the community. In addition, they suggested that the path be designed so that the southern portion, the northern portion, I think this is a mistake, the northern portion was narrowed, which is the portion between the pool and Emery Bay Village. If that is narrowed, then the existing space between the pool and the property would not need to be changed, and the deck next to the pool would be retained. And then what they felt that in the northern portion, that would be a little bit narrow, it's about four feet at this point, and then it would taper out for the remainder of the path. And so although the portion of the path would not meet the Caltrans Class 1 bicycle path standards, the remainder of the path would. And what this does, it has advantage of not impacting the existing pool deck, and it has the advantage of not having to take property from the East Bay Village folks. So this is a video of the path that we're talking about where it's narrow and needs to retain that. Let's see if this works. There you go. It sort of gives you the idea of, so the pool would be on the right-hand side. So this is roughly four feet. And then you're walking the other way. Okay, so I guess you get the picture. So that concludes my, oops, I'm in a rush here, am I? Sorry. So that concludes my presentation. We are recommending that you recommend to the city council to approve this amendment along with the associated changes in the bike and bed plan as well as the general plan.
So Maru, there's been no design of this path at all?
No.
Do you know, or maybe BPAC knows, what the, for Class 1, how wide it needs to be?
I can answer that.
I believe the minimum Caltrans standard for Class 1 is eight feet of pavement and then two feet of unpaved shoulder. So it's a total of 12 feet.
So we have Cindy from Community Services to represent both the ECL project, and I believe we have some residents from the East Bay Village as well.
And again, we have Laura McCamey from the BPAC as well.
All right. Let's hear from the ECL first.
So I'm Cindy Montero, Community Services Director. I went to the Bike and Pedestrian Committee and just expressed my concern about if we were to have to widen that path at the pool end, that it would be a safety issue. It would take up a lot of our deck space, and if we were having an emergency at the pool and we would have to board somebody, there would not be enough space on that side to do that. So that was my main concern about if we were going to widen it. I think their suggestion was to have a pinch point there and to just leave it as the four feet, so.
Okay. Rob, you want to come up?
Good evening, Commissioners. I could also mention that if you noticed in the video, when the camera turned around and kind of came back headed south towards 47th Street, you're looking at another large fenced enclosure at the end there. It's not a clear shot out to 47th Street. There's a very large existing emergency generator that sits there because the gymnasium itself serves as the community emergency shelter area. And so that generator is fueled and is able to keep the gymnasium going if all the power in the city is not available. That entire setup would also have to be relocated, so there would be significant expenses involved, expenditures involved in that as well.
One question. The gymnasium is staying in this first phase, is that correct?
The gymnasium stays permanently.
Permanently.
And we're renovating, rebuilding and renovating the existing gym, and also the pool area.
Okay.
Just for the record, that's Roy Miller, the school district's architect.
Well, we heard from BPAC, but would you like to?
Thank you, Laura McCamey, again Chair of the BPAC. And to me, you can see that the BPAC was even more unanimous in wanting to keep this path. I agree that it's not ideal to have a pinch point, but I think we felt that we would rather, you know, we certainly understood the safety concerns around the pool, and we would rather have a non-ideal path than no path at all. And I've been very concerned about bicycle and pedestrian access to ECL as this design process has been happening. And one of the things that happened, turning 45th Street, excuse me, 47th Street into a bike boulevard, I think was a really good move because it directs bike traffic across the street right into ECL. But once you get in there, it's hard to get out, you know, hard to figure out how to get out as a bicycle and a pedestrian. And this just gives much easier access out of the ECL complex. And I think there's a consideration here is how do we want people to get to ECL? If this is a center of community life, do we want everyone to have to drive there? Do we want kids to have to walk on San Pablo, which I hope will be a better, you know, environment in the future, but right now is a pretty unwalkable, unfriendly place? Wouldn't it be nicer if kids didn't have to go out in traffic, if kids and seniors and people of all ages could have someplace that's off-road and easier access to get into ECL? If we really want to make it a center of community life, let's let the community have as many ways as possible to get in. I think this path is really important, and I understand there are design challenges, but I hope that those can be overcome. Thanks.
Thank you. So this being a public hearing, we will open it. Please come forward. If you have anything to comment on, you'll have three minutes. Thank you. And please sign in.
I'll do that after.
After.
My name is April Atencio. I'm a member of Doyle Street Cohousing. I'm also a member of Rural, Residence United for Livable Emeryville, although that's for identification purposes only. This is my opinion. I would really like to see this bike path happen, still happen. I think the design stuff could be worked around. Kind of ditto what Laura said, but also I just want to address the concerns about like the safety stuff. I just feel, I'm of the mindset that more eyes make a safer place, so the more people you have going through and the more vibrant you make this area, the less it's going to be happening. I mean, I know, I think we've told the story of when we were going down a bike path up on the Greenway, Doyle Street Greenway, and we actually, on our bikes, actually caught someone doing some, something, they were, some guy was hitting on his ex-girlfriend, and we actually helped stop it because we were going through there. And so more eyes make a safe place, so I just want to say that. Okay, thanks.
Thank you. Anyone else?
Chairperson Vanessa, members of the commission, staff, audience, did you all get a copy of my last email? I don't think there's any sense of going through all the items on that one more time, but I can tell you that I've lived in Emery Bay Village for 31 years. I'm an original owner. And during that 31 years, we had nothing but problems with people on the high school side of the fence. And I don't see why we're having this path. It won't make any difference. It'll probably just make it worse. There's a number of people here from, excuse me, can't talk tonight, from Emery Bay Village if you'd like to hear from them. We have the president of our board of directors, Kim. We have Matt. We have my wife. Robin is here, although she thinks it ought to be a path. It's just been a horrible problem forever, and letting the path as a bicycle pedestrian is not going to improve anything. You've already heard from Cindy and staff, how it narrows down to nothing. I don't think you can even make a bicycle through there. You may be able to push one. It also begins in Oakland and it doesn't start in Emeryville. Generally, I remember when I spoke up many, many times against the 53rd Street, which is our in Oakland, and the path, and et cetera, et cetera. But I don't think it's a good idea. It's a part of the general plan amendment. Thank you.
Thank you. Anyone else wishing to speak?
Hello. My name's Matt Johnson. I live at Emery Bay Village, and I think this path is going to be detrimental to Emery Bay Village and won't be any benefit to anyone. I can't see people coming from 53rd to 47th. I think they'll come up Horton or Hollis, up 47th or, you know, across San Pablo, down 47th. It's just a path to nowhere, and it's going to cause tremendous problems for Emery Bay Village. As Jim already mentioned, there's a long history of problems in that area, and this is just going to make it worse. So I hope you'll agree to remove this path. Thanks.
Thank you.
I like the staff-produced video, very scary-looking video. It made it look really scary. And so I sort of would remind the staff that you're, you know, you should be a little more, try to be a little more objective when you give information to the decision-makers. You know, instead of pushing your agenda so like flagrantly like that, I just think that you're doing a disservice. It was a scary-looking video. Made it look like, you know, it's too narrow, claustrophobic, and I think that was done, you're being played here with that video. I just, I don't appreciate that. I don't think the staff should be engaged in that sort of, you know, subjectivity. I think you should be trying to be more objective. But what's not being talked about really here tonight is the idea that we can widen the path and maybe a little bit, maybe not to eight feet, but a little bit, take some of the pool deck away, which is copious. I don't know if anybody's been to that pool. I've been there many times. It's huge. I can't, I would have to estimate, I'm a builder, so I, 25 feet of pool deck probably. How about let's give them 22 feet of pool deck? And I don't, you know, of course, they don't want to shrink their pool deck because it's, they see that as a pejorative thing, a negative thing. But, you know, they're not being team players here because not everybody is, you know, works for the center of community life. Some of us are residents and want to, we bike and we walk, and we're not, this town should not just be for the center of community life. We should be making accommodation for all users. So the fact that they're trying to take shrinking down the pool deck off the table of discussion is just, that's just an agenda they're pushing because it's something they would like to do. But I think you should ask them about that. Well, how about shrinking down a little bit more? Why can't you work with us on this? And I think it's just because they're being obstinate, frankly. Okay, then Mr. Miller talked about how there's expenditures with moving the generator. Now, on a, this project's going to cost over $100 million to move a generator so we can retain, not have to modify a general plan and cheapen a general plan is nothing. There's been, I mean, this is a huge project, and to move a generator is, the fact that he's sort of implying that this is like a bridge too far, I think is, you know, absurd. I think that's ridiculous. Furthermore, we're not necessarily building a Class 1 bicycle path here as Mr. Bryant told you that, what the parameters are. We're building a bicycle pedestrian path, not a Class 1 bicycle path. And then the last thing I wanted to say about this, the idea of removing this path, is that if you read the general plan, which I presume you have, you'll know that this path is in, the general plan calls for this area right there around this school, a pedestrian priority zone. Pedestrian priority. Now, it's kind of ironic that you guys vote here tonight to remove a pedestrian amenity in a pedestrian priority zone that the general plan calls out.
Thank you. Anyone else wishing to speak? Come on up.
I somewhat agree with Mr. Donahue. It's a shame that the pathways are.
Come up to the mic a little bit more.
Yeah. It's a shame that the pathways are being deleted. They're supposed to be there. But the problem is that when you're, when you're, before you even start the projects, you should be looking into how it all fits and not doing it right at the last minute where it, you know, everything's already, you know, the drawings are done and everything else is ready to go, and then you say, oh, well, we can't have this pathway, and so let's just get rid of it. So I would say that all these pathways should be in there, but you guys got to make them fit and just, and that's about it. Thank you.
Thank you. Remember to sign in, please.
Good evening. My name is Kim Kurata. I am president currently of the Emery Bay Village HOA. I'm not here representing all of our homeowners. I'm here as an independent. But, and as much as I like walking paths and bike paths, I just don't think that particular location is the most ideal. It doesn't make sense. In the evening, I would think it's going to cause a lot of problems for security reasons. During the day, I would think it'd be causing some problems for the school, and I don't think that's an ideal position to have the bike and a pedestrian walkway. We have Spur Alley just a few yards further down, and I know I use that quite often, and I don't understand why we're spending millions of dollars to build yet another pathway when we already have something that's existing. And it's just, to me, it seems redundant. So I just want to make that clean.
Thank you. Anyone else? Okay, seeing none, we'll close the public hearing. What do you think, Stephen? Start on this end.
I'd like to hear more about improving this connection point because it sounds like people really want to keep it, but perhaps it's a little bit unsafe in certain minds. But I think we can rectify that. I really, based on what I've heard and seen in person, I don't think if we take a few feet out of the pool deck as recommended by another gentleman and put it into a pathway which is more friendly, more inviting. I also agree the eyes on the street, the Jane Jacobs method of really keeping control through the community. But I think a pathway should be the last thing we delete. Now, if it's not perfectly designed, perhaps we can improve that. I think that's within our jurisdiction.
I think that there are some issues with the path in the sense that right now it does sort of go from nowhere to nowhere. On the south side, there's not much of a destination there. However, it's not designed. It hasn't been vetted. The path was in the general plan all through the ECL design process and was left out apparently somehow. So I think it's premature to delete it from the general plan.
So I agree with Gail. This is one of the things that I brought up at the two study sessions for the ECL, that I'm really kind of disappointed that the design hasn't really been incorporated. We haven't really addressed the north street where there's a conflict between bikes and cars. And I think about, the bike ride to that I regularly do through Berkeley, I go down Rose Street, and I find throughout Berkeley, the people are, the cars are really cautious and careful and try and cooperate with bikes. But boy, when I get around that, the schools, when they're letting out, it's like parents behaving badly. It's like people cutting out in front of you. It's like car doors slamming in front of you, kids walking in front of you. So we don't have the, is that 53rd Street, the north side? We don't have that designed. And it's like, somebody said, it's like you're kind of ignoring things until the end, and then it's like, this is kind of an afterthought. And it shouldn't be an afterthought, especially at a school, that we need to provide every means of access for kids and paths to provide access to this thing. And I think this is truly a critical path to get people safely there to maybe resolve some of the conflicts that are inherent on 53rd Street. So I definitely do not support taking this out of the general plan. I think we can make it work somehow. And also, just to offer an observation about the safety and the fears of the neighbors is the Greenway. I look at the Greenway, which is a pedestrian path, and I was walking that on Sunday, coming back from Berkeley Bowl, and there was an open house. And I was amazed at the crowd that that house was gathering because we have this great amenity, this pedestrian path that's there. It's, I don't think paths are something to be feared if we can design them safely, if there's clear access across, and especially at a school. And the other thing that we should look at too is the other path that's shown on the same block that connects to Spur Alley. We talked, somebody said about Spur Alley as a parallel path. Well, it's a parallel path, but it doesn't really do anything for the school. It's like, that's another thing that should be considered as far as the whole plan for the school. And that's, I really think that's been ignored, and we have to address it, and we have to make use of these things. So I definitely do not support taking this out of the general plan.
Well, I think that, once again, this path really goes from the Oakland border to the backside of a bus yard, and that as far as access to the school is concerned, the school can have gates adjacent to both ends of this path to allow students into the campus from either side so that it doesn't, they don't really need to cross. Now, compared to the Greenway, I don't think makes too much sense. The Greenway has large, multi-story condominiums on either side of it, so there are a lot of windows on that path. It's quite wide in its landscape. This path will not be at the same scale. And as a consequence, I don't support it.
I do not want to take this out of the general plan. I think it is important, and here is our opportunity to design it correctly. I think Mr. Donahue had a point about that. I'm not sure about the pool deck, whether it needs, how big, could you, I'm sorry, could you come on back up, Cindy? I had a quick question about that six-foot, what is it now?
Sorry. Same again.
The pool, the pool deck that's adjacent to the pedestrian path, how wide is it now?
I honestly didn't bring those plans with me. I don't want to give you a wrong number. My information on the safety aspects of that pool deck has really come from the Community Services Division, so I assume that they're looking at that and have made their judgments about it.
Okay. All right. Thank you.
It's not, it's not a huge, it is not a huge pool deck, so I do understand their safety concerns.
That is just one side of it, so, thank you. So, you know, there's possibility of moving it in two feet. The rest of the path is 12-foot wide. If there are eyes on the path by not, by having the chain link fence that's open, there's a possibility that one could put tempered glass on the pool deck area, which would make it completely open. And I think that the possibility of moving the transformer and the gas generator is an option too. And here's where we can make sure we get this right. So I would not support removing this from the general plan. Are there any other comments? Make a motion to deny this resolution?
I second the motion.
Take the roll, please.
Okay, so the motion is not to approve the resolution amending, recommending that the city council approve the general plan amendment. Commissioner Donaldson.
I'm voting whichever way I have to vote to say keep it. Keep it in the plan.
A yes vote means you support the motion, which is against the general plan amendment. No, no.
I vote no.
No, no.
I think you want to vote yes.
I vote yes. Okay.
A yes vote means you support keeping it in the general plan.
That's it.
Okay. Commissioner Sherman.
Yes.
Commissioner Steinberg.
Yes.
Vice Chair Cardoza.
No.
And Chair Kummerly.
Aye.
For as one more, the motion passes, the resolution does not pass, we will forward your recommendation to the city council to not delete this path from the general plan.
Okay, thank you.
Yes. No, yes. Aye.
Okay. All right. Thank you. Thanks for everyone for coming out. Our next item on the agenda is the AT&amp;T Black Dot Wireless Extension.
Good evening, Commissioners. Before you, you have an application to extend, an application that was approved October 2011. This is for the AT&amp;T wireless site at what's commonly known as the Water Tower property. The property is located along Powell Street between Doyle and Bodry and adjacent to Stanford, yeah, Stanford Park. The building sits here in the northeast corner, the Water Tower in the northwest corner. And currently, the Water Tower does have equipment, antennas, et cetera, on it already, and the equipment shelters for those antennas are in this back area to the south of the building. These are pictures of the site as it is today. As you can see, the antennas do already. As you can see, the antennas do already line up along the legs of the Water Tower. And these are photos mostly west from the outside of the property and in the same direction showing the existing trash enclosure, which on the rear has equipment. These are images from the plans that were approved, showing the plan view of the Water Tower. This image only shows the proposed antennas, not the existing. So there would be four on these two structures, I guess you could call it, and then two each on these two. And this is just a reminder, that was also in your staff report, that a condition of approval from the original approval required that these structures are curved to match the curve of the Water Tower. The two structures that have four on them are at the kind of bottom of the Water Tower, whereas these two structures are down the leg, so they would not curve. And this shows an elevation where the four proposed are up near the top, and then the two sections are down here. These are the existing that are not involved in this application. And then the shelter. What exists currently is this wall here with this equipment shown here, and this is the trash enclosure. What's proposed is this drawing where an entire new shelter is constructed. The trash enclosure is bumped out one, and that's what requires the removal of a parking spot, which is what requires the variance. So again, this is the layout. There are two AC units on this rear area that I'm told are very quiet. There's a ivy-colored covered fence here blocking a view of any of these from the park, the trash enclosure, and the new equipment shelter here. This is all to the south of the building. And here are some renderings showing what this would look like from, again, from the street, the trash enclosure would bump out. And looking in from the parking lot, you can see it moves forward. And here are some renderings of the proposed equipment on the Water Tower. You can see the antenna equipment here and here. So there are three findings required to approve an extension. They are that the permit holder has clearly documented, that has made a good faith effort to commence work upon the use. This applicant, AT&amp;T, was in talks about a merger with another company, and all permits were put on hold while those talks went forward. That merger did not take place, and now all of the permits are being reexamined. The applicant is ready to move forward with a building permit and installing the equipment if this, this extension is approved. The second finding is that it is in the best interest of the city to extend the permit. This facility, like all cell facilities, will improve the reception quality of people using the AT&amp;T network. That's what these facilities do. And there are no substantial changes to the project and no new information requiring secret review. That is the case here. There is no new information to provide and no new review required. Therefore, staff recommends approval of this extension of the design review and variance applications. I'm happy to answer any questions. And Jimmy Stillman, representing AT&amp;T, is also here for any questions you might have.
So is the resolution include the curved four?
The resolution would be for the conditions of approval as they are, which includes those.
That's right. Okay, yes. Thank you.
Any other questions? Okay.
Do you, would the applicant like to, there's, there's no new changes?
Yeah, good evening, Ms. Coomerly and members of the commission. As Ms. Cassidy mentioned, I do represent AT&amp;T, and I don't really have anything to add. I think the staff report was very well-written, and this is just kind of a continuation due to a circumstance that happened when T-Mobile and AT&amp;T were in talks to kind of merge networks. And then again, as you may know, that, that merger did not happen. When that merger was taking place, most of the majority of cell sites were put on hold to kind of see what was flushed out of that. And now that it didn't happen, they're interested in going back and moving forward with many of these new site builds to bring the city of Emeryville, its residents and business owners kind of seamless coverage and enhance capacities, which this site will provide. So if you have any questions for me, I'd be happy to answer anything or provide any clarity or give you any details about the project.
Does anyone have any questions? Okay, thank you.
Thank you.
This is a public hearing, so is there anyone who would like to come forward and speak on this item?
Okay, just a few moments ago, Vice Commissioner Cardoza, Buzz Cardoza, Lawrence Buzz Cardoza, he just slandered me when he said that I had spoken out against a bike path near the Artist Cooperative where I live. So now I'm giving Mr. Cardoza a chance to tell everybody here assembled here and the television audience...
Brian, is this about this item?
This is about, this is about the Water Tower here. It's poetically connected to the Water Tower. So I'm offering Mr. Cardoza a chance. You can tell everybody, Buzz, where you got your information, because I'm telling you that's patently false. And I would know because I'm in favor of the path you're talking about. It's a mid-block connection between Horton and Holden, right next to the Artist Co-op. So here I am. Now, tell us where you heard that.
This item is not on the agenda at this time.
No, this is poetically connected to the item on the agenda. Yes, it is. So Mr. Cardoza, you have one minute to tell the people here where you got this information.
This is not the time.
This is the time. This is poetically connected to the Water Tower issue. Mr. Cardoza, could you please tell the television audience where you've, where you heard that I'm against this Artist Cooperative bicycle pedestrian path? Could you please tell everybody this? Since you chose to slander me, could you please tell the television audience about Mr. Cardoza?
Brian, you are welcome to state whatever you want to state.
I'm waiting for Mr. Cardoza. I've got, I've used a minute and 34 seconds. So Mr. Cardoza, with all remaining time, Mr. Cardoza, I'm going to be silent. And that's, that's poetry. I'm poetically having a pause whereby I'm thinking about this, this, this item on the agenda. So I want to have a pause, and that's part of my, my, my comment.
And while, and while he's pausing, I will remind the commission that...
I don't want you to interrupt me, please. I'm speaking now. There's more time to speak. The Bayon Act allows me three minutes to speak. I don't want Mr. Ginnett to interrupt me.
So...
Don't interrupt him. Okay, stop the clock.
The commission isn't required to respond to the public comments.
That's true.
It's just to take, take in the comments. So you're not required to respond.
That's true. But I appreciate you, don't, please don't interrupt me. Now, start the clock again.
Yep. Go forward.
Waiting for Mr. Cardoza.
I am not required to...
You're not required to respond.
Not required. If you can, if you choose, tell, tell, tell everybody where you heard this. It's fun, I guess it's fun to commit, to slander somebody. I don't think it's fun, but I guess Mr. Cardoza does think that.
I'm waiting for the AT&amp;T part.
Okay, that's three minutes. Mr. Cardoza lied when he told everybody that.
Thanks, Brian. Is there anyone, anyone else wishing to speak on this item? Seeing none, we'll close the public hearing.
I'd like to have a poll.
Second. Okay. Any objections?
The second was who? Sorry.
Gail? Gail. Okay. No objections.
So it's 6-0. The extension is approved. This decision may be appealed to the city council within 15 days.